Good evening everyone. Welcome, welcome one and all to those who are here in the room and to all those who are on social media. Special welcome to you and we are here one more Tuesday night to study the Word of God. You know, when we know the Word, we do not err. And when we know the Word, we are clean. And the Word is a lamp unto our feet and a light unto our path. So when we have the Word in us, the Holy Spirit can talk to us through the Word. So we just thank God for tonight and we are going to start by singing some choruses. Real, real. So Brother Miller said, "Real, real." So we'll start by singing, "Real, real." Real, real, real. Christ is so real to me. I love Him because He gives us the victory. Many people doubt Him, but I can't do without Him. That is why I love Him so, He's so real to me. Real, real, real. Christ is so real to me. I love Him because He gives us the victory. Many people doubt Him, but I can't do without Him. That is why I love Him so, He's so real to me. Real, real, real. Christ is so real to me. I love Him because He gives us the victory. Many people doubt Him, but I can't do without Him. That is why I love Him so, He's so real to me. One more time. He's real, real. Christ is so real to me. I love Him because He gives us the victory. Many people doubt Him, but I can't do without Him. That is why I love Him so, He's so real to me. And because He's so real, we're going to start him, my little. Father God, we just thank you for today. We thank you for life. We thank you for health. We thank you for strength. We thank you for protecting us, oh God, and that we can be here tonight together around your Word. We pray for those who are coming. We pray for those who would be online tonight, that they will arrive early. And mighty God, help us, oh Father, as we share the Word, that it will resonate with us. It will stay with us. We will remember the Word and hide the Word in our hearts, mighty God, so that we will not sin against you. We pray, oh God, for Pastor, as he goes through the kingdom with us one more time. Oh God, we look to you and as we glorify your name, we ask the blessed Holy Spirit to announce us again one more time, to be in our presence one more time. When we leave this place, we will say, "It was good for us to be here." Bless us, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Let us sing, "Reach Out," and we sing that one. Stand up. We sing, "Reach Out and Touch the Lord." Reach out and touch the Lord as he passes by. You'll find he's not too busy to hear your heart's cry. He's passing by this moment, your needs to supply. Reach out and touch the Lord as he passes by. Reach out and touch the Lord as he passes by. You'll find he's not too busy to hear your heart's cry. He's passing by this moment, your needs to supply. Reach out and touch the Lord as he passes by. One more time. Reach out. Hallelujah. Touch the Lord. Hallelujah. 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 You'll find he's not too busy to hear your heart's cry. He's passing by this moment, your needs to supply. Reach out and touch the Lord as he passes by. Hallelujah. 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 We praise you, oh God. We worship you, Jesus. We lift you up. Hallelujah. We magnify your name. Hallelujah. King of kings and lord of lords. Hallelujah. There is no one like you. We give you all the praise. Hallelujah. We give you all the honor. Hey, hallelujah. Mighty God. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. We worship you, Lord. Hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah. Hey, hallelujah. Bless the Lord, oh my soul. Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah. 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 We praise you, Lord. Hallelujah. Bless your name, Jesus. Bless your name, Jesus. Hallelujah. 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 Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah. We bless your name, Jesus. Hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah. Wonderful Savior. Wonderful Savior. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Jesus. Yes, Lord. Hallelujah. We magnify your name, Jesus. Hallelujah. Hey. Hey, worship in Jesus. Oh God, we lift you up in this house, mighty God. There is none like you, Lord Jesus. Hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Hallelujah. 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 Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. That you ever thought of me. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. That you ever thought of me. Many other blessings that you give unto me. Blessings overflowing like the mighty sea. Lord, I want to thank you. I want to thank you. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. I want to thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. I want to thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. I want to thank you. Thank you, Lord. I want to thank you. I want to thank you. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. I want to thank you, Lord. I want to thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. That you ever thought of me. Many other blessings that you give unto me. Blessings overflowing like the mighty sea. Lord, I want to thank you for your love to me. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. I want to thank you, Lord. Hallelujah. That you ever thought of me. Hallelujah. Thank you, Lord. That you ever thought of me. Many are the blessings from we born till now. Many are the blessings. And there's more to come. God is keeping us. That's a blessing. We can come into the house of God and worship and talk about Jesus freely. Hallelujah. That's a blessing. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. What was your song again? What was it? Okay. Go ahead. Love my Lord. I want to know if you love my Jesus. I want to know if you love. Stand up and tell me if you love my Jesus. Stand up and tell me if you love. I love you. I want to know if you love my Jesus. I want to know if you love. I love you. Stand up and tell me if you love my Jesus. Stand up and tell me if you love. I love you. I want to know if you love my Jesus. I want to know if you love. I love you. Stand up and tell me if you love my Jesus. Stand up and tell me if you love. I love you. I want to know if you love my Jesus. I want to know. Hallelujah. My Lord. Hallelujah. I should love God. Because we are in the kingdom. We are kingdom people. Hallelujah. The kingdom is such a wonderful place. I am discovering so much about the kingdom. Because in Matthew 12, verse 28, it says... 28... "But if I am cast now demons by the Spirit of God, then the kingdom of God has arrived among us." So when the Holy Spirit give us the power to do these things, cast out demons. Yes, the kingdom of God is among us. I remember, it's a spiritual kingdom, right? And I'm so happy to be a part of this kingdom. So we're going to do everything to stay in this kingdom. The Holy Spirit as the illustration and instruction, we just to follow. That means we're going to read the Word. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. What you think about Jesus? What you think about Jesus, oh, is alright. What you think about Jesus, is alright. He's alright, alright, alright. Oh, what you think about Jesus, oh, is alright. What you think about Jesus, oh, is alright. What you think about Jesus, oh, is alright. He's alright, alright, alright. What you think about Jesus, oh, is alright. What you think about Jesus, oh, is alright. What you think about Jesus, oh, is alright. He's alright, alright, alright. Oh, Jesus, Jesus. Hallelujah. He's alright. Jesus, 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 he's alright. Jesus, 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 he's alright. He's alright, alright. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Glory to God. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. You know, the song, I don't think it can fit right here, but the song keep coming to me. And we're going to sing it right now. It's on my mind about leaving Babylon. Leaving Babylon, go away, in the kingdom. Set is so fitting, right? So we're going to sing, "Leave Babylon." Leave Babylon. Leave Babylon. Leave Babylon and come. Hallelujah. Don't mind your friend, they will love you to scorn. When Christ was here, they had done him the very same. Oh, look in your life. See how you live. Leave Babylon and come. Come, we are in the kingdom one more time. Leave Babylon. Oh, leave Babylon. Yes. Leave Babylon and come in the kingdom. Hallelujah. Don't mind your friend, they will love you to scorn. Oh, yes. When Christ was here, they had done him the very same. Oh, look in your life and see how you live. Leave Babylon and come in the kingdom. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. I'm so excited about the kingdom. Hallelujah. We just thank God for this time of worshiping song. And we're going to do some praying before the Word. Any requests? Riversdale, Paul. Grand Spain? I didn't know where that church up there. I didn't know, oh, that was up Grand Spain. Oh, well, I don't have a TV, so... So pray that something we put in place to cause them to be productive. All right, remember those who are sick and the bereaved? And the church? Oh, oh, okay. All right, so remember the Walters family, Sandra. Walters, her father. Sorry. So remember the family. Okay, we're going to ask some people to pray. Sister Sandra, we pray for those who have been murdered brutally, those who have been murdered. Sister Bev? I'm going to pray for the bereaved and those who are sick. I'm going to ask the bereaved and those who are sick. I'm going to ask Crystal to give you the microphone to pray. Teacher, we're going to ask her to pray for the teachers and the children. Reach out and touch the Lord as he passes by. You'll find he's not too busy to hear your heart's cry. He's passing by this moment, your needs to supply. Reach out and touch the Lord as he passes by. Hallelujah. Touch the Lord as he passes by. You will find he's not too busy to hear your heart's cry. He's passing by this moment, your needs to supply. Reach out and touch the Lord as he passes by. Hallelujah. 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 Father God, we come to you in a time like this, oh God. A time of grieving, oh great and mighty God. Where many hearts are heavy and in pain, oh great and mighty God. Their hearts are in emotion, oh God. Hallelujah. Of mourning, great and mighty God. But you are our refuge. You are our strength, oh God. Hallelujah. And so we look to you, great and mighty God, that you, Father God, will help those, comfort those, great and mighty God, those who are in mourning in such a time like this. Great and mighty God. Hallelujah. We pray for the family members, oh God almighty. We pray, God, that you will bear them up in their pain, God almighty. Some are asking, "Why, God?" But we know, Father God, that maybe we would not know why until when we meet you on that day, great and mighty God. Hallelujah. Father, we pray for the children, oh great and mighty God. We're left behind to face, oh God, no parents, oh great and mighty God. So we ask you, God, that you will provide for them, oh God. That man, that woman, oh God, who will be there for them and to help them grow up, oh God, in you, in the mighty name of our Lord Jesus Christ of Nazareth. And so, God, we pray to the Lenten bread of Jamaica, God, for those who are mourning. I remember, God, that little eight-year-old Jesus. My Father God, it was not an enemy. It was a close one, great and mighty God. So we know that it is hard for that mother to take it in, God. But we ask that your hands of comfort will carry her, oh God. Hallelujah. In such a time like this, you are our great Comforter. And so we rest in your hands, oh great and mighty God. All those who are mourning and we are comforted, God, that you are the great Comforter. Thank you for hearing now and thank you, great God, for what you will do in the mighty name of Jesus. Hallelujah. 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 Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Mighty God. Some trust in chariot. My God. Some in horses. Yes. But we continue to remember the name of the Lord, oh God. Amen. Father God. This moment, you know, those families that are in mourning because of lost loved ones. Yes, Lord. Sometime from sickness, sometime just at the spark of a matches. But mighty God, you know it all. Your word said, "Some look at the outer, but you look on the heart." And so tonight, Lord, there are times when you are going through grieving stages. Some persons operate as if they want you to be enemy with the world. Because of some of what they come in with. But like somebody said, "If you don't have nothing to say, just hold the hand." Just hold the hand. My God. Mighty God. Hold the hand. Just hold the hand. This morning, Lord God, when I heard the dance start to quote Scripture and I groan in my spirit, my son said, "What happened to your mommy?" And I said, "For all those families who are without loved ones, I can identify roughly about four families that went down, if not more, because of that man. And for him coming now to say, quote in Scripture, Father God, all when you stand up in a mistumoko, me still feel grieve. I've been there. I know what it feels like. Have children and you alone to go through. Take out the breadwinner. But God, you sit high and you look low. You understand every groaning. You understand every eye-water. You understand everything better than anyone else, mighty God. And so those families who are in mourning tonight, Lord, who are suffering from death, we put our sister before you. There are persons who will come in and say, "Oh, he was sick." Even when the person is ill, God, when that final moment comes. Because death in itself is a sting. My God. So tonight, Lord Jesus, we lift up the family, Sister Sandra's family. We lift up the rest of persons, I don't know, who are in mourning tonight. Yes, Jesus. And Jesus, be a Comforter. Be a Comforter, Lord. Touch hearts. Touch mine. Touch every area, Lord God, spiritually, mentally, physically, financially. Because there are times when it come down to this. Sometimes we grieving, not because of the debt, but because of the finance. And more times when it come down to debt, family tear apart because there are some who want the dead life. But tonight, Lord Jesus, we stretch it out and lay it all to you. Families that are ill, oh God, touch. Healing, your word said healing is a children's bread. And we go down to the root of the sickness and we say, God, you have healed so many. There are persons who will come out and say, I was ill. There are somebody I know who haven't heard from her and I bizarre. And she said, I was ill with the COVID and this is an asthmatic person. So God, they are testimonies at the end of it. So Lord Jesus, hear my cry tonight, attend unto my prayer. When they going get rough, help, Lord. And help us not to look because there are people who will come and tell you, but help with nothing go see a man, but look to you, give you the whole hundred, not ninety-nine, mighty God. And so tonight, where I have failed to ask, do not fail to grant, in your name I pray, amen.
Hello. Good night, everyone. Lord, we come before you now, giving thanks for this day, this evening that you have made. Lord, help us to rejoice and be glad in it. Lord, I come before you, asking for help for our teachers. Lord, you see the plight of the nations, children, Lord. The teachers are moving away and they are looking for greener pastures. And Lord, while this is true for some of the teacher's story, there is still the plight of our children, nations, children, Father, who need a teacher, who need teachers. You've heard of schools where they've lost majority of teachers. I can remember Lawrence Tavern, a school in Lawrence Tavern in particular, where up to September morning, Lord, there was majority of the teachers gone, who never resigned, who retired. And Father, you see the plight. Father, it is said that to destroy a nation, you just have to lower the education system in that country and then allow cheating in examination rooms. Father, if we don't see the necessity for our teachers so that the next generation can be inspired by the education in the country to elevate, to motivate and just to rise above that which they are in. Father, we pray that you will rise up in our young teachers, those who are in training, this, the desire to want to be part of who we will become, who the next generation will become, the next generation of doctors, lawyers, teachers, politicians, scientists, astronauts, Father, you name it, the different professions. We need this generation to realize that the teachers are so important and without them, the next generation will fail to thrive. Father, I pray that you will help those who are in the system now to continue to go forth, Lord, and continue to be that light. Father, the light that the children need so that they will know that they too can be successful and they too can rise above what is just the norm, what is just the man on the corner just rubbing his hand middle or the man on the street side who does sit down and looking into space. Father, we pray that you will just rise up within us, the need to see that teaching is not just about going to school, writing on the board and saying to the children, okay, this is what we're doing today. But Lord, the inspiration, the innovation, the future of this nation, Father, and we need the people to realize that teachers are the motivators for our next generation. Father, I pray that you continue to strengthen those in the system, give them the courage, give them the understanding, give them the love, the support that they need to provide for the children, Father, because it is so much more than just math, English. Father, we pray that you will just continue to bear us up, bear them up. And Father, help the principals especially, who are in charge of everyone on the grounds. Father, sometimes we fail to look at the man who helps to keep the school clean, the woman who helps to clean out the classroom, the person who prints the papers in the admin block. Father, we pray that you just cover, just go through and just cover the entire grounds, Father. Here, there, everywhere. And Father, let us not forget that it is not just Jamaica and we love, but the entire world, mighty God, the different situations, the different cultural background settings. Father, we pray that you just go through, Lord, the tabernacle over students, children, the parents, the teachers, all the persons that have to do with the next generation, Father. We just pray a special covering, special blessing. And Father, we pray for your continued guidance. Father, all these things we ask in no other name but the name of your Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Father God, we just thank you for tonight. We thank you, mighty God, for being your host to study and to learn more about your word. Oh God, your word cut through marrow and bone. And tonight, oh God, let it find a place in us. Give us the spirit, oh God, to love your word, to read your word. Mighty God, help us to hide it in our hearts tonight. Lord, we ask for fresh anointing. We ask for fresh anointing our pastor tonight as he gives the word to us. Help us, oh God, to hide it in our hearts. Help us not just to hear, be here as only, but to be doors of the word. So we pray a blessing upon this meeting tonight. We give you all the thanks, all the praise, all the honor, in Jesus' name, amen. So welcome our pastor tonight. He has been doing a good job, give him a hand.
Good evening, everyone. And I think we have two first timers, there's two, yeah. Normally, we ask to stand up and tell us your name, but we're not, we're gonna put you on the spot. Can't tell, you okay? You want to stand and tell us your names? No, you don't, all right. It's all right. Good evening, everyone. Please, can we? Yeah, we have, we have a couple, a couple passages that we want to spend some time on, spend some time in for tonight's study. We welcome persons who are on, online. Yes. Now, I have, I have to begin with an apology because I left here last week, Tuesday evening, convinced that we were going to go into stewardship in the kingdom. And from, from early on, I have been constrained to deal with the righteousness in the kingdom. So we are deferring the look at us being stewards in the kingdom to look at what it means to live a righteous life in the kingdom. Clear? All right. So yeah, we're looking at the righteous roots of the kingdom of God. Let's bow heads for prayer. And I know we pray already, but can't pray too much. Father, thank you. Thanks again for the assurance that we have your Holy Spirit who will guide us into all truth. We want nothing more, nothing less than to hear your word and to do it. So prepare our hearts and minds. We don't want to be just tickled by something new. We want, Lord, to yield our members to being led, constrained, guided by your Holy Spirit. Hear our prayer, we ask you, in Jesus' name, amen. Early out, at the start, we said that the king rules with a righteous scepter. Scepter is that baton normally made of special precious metal. It symbolizes what the kingdom's authority is based on. In Psalm forty-five, verse six and verse seven, we are told that the Lord reigns with a scepter of righteousness. That scepter, everybody, everybody in the kingdom knows what it stands for. And so we in the kingdom of God, those who name the name of Christ, all the citizens in the kingdom, not only should know, but are expected to abide by and to promote the righteousness of the kingdom, to align with what the king represents, what the king stands for. Because you could get yourself into trouble if you are found to be supporting something and preaching and teaching and practicing some things that go against what the kingdom is about. Psalm thirty-three, verse one through to verse five. Somebody else find verse eighteen down to verse twenty-two of that same Psalm thirty-three. They introduce us again to the king and they we want to understand a little bit more about who this king is. The king of glory, the Lord's strong and mighty, oh Lord, Jesus Christ, one who fills all the earth. If you have a microphone near you and you have the passage in your hand, feel free to read. Psalm thirty-three, verse one to verse five.
Psalms thirty-three, one to five. Rejoice in the Lord, oh ye righteous, for praise is commonly for the upright. Praise the Lord with harp, sing unto him with a pasory and an instrument of ten strings. Sing unto him a new song, play skillfully with a loud noise. For the word of the Lord is right and all his works are true. He loves righteousness and judgment. The heart is full of the goodness of the Lord. Your hand at the word of God.
So thank you, Sandra. The psalmist speaks to the righteous, telling them rejoice in the Lord. Praise is becoming of the upright. He encourages us to rejoice those who believe and are surrendered to the Lordship of Jesus Christ. And we must do that, the encouragement is, for the word of the Lord is right. Firm, clear, uplifting. Everything he does is done in truth, sincere, consistent, not change. But here the capstone and all of that, the Lord. If me and you want to know what pleases God, here is a good place to start. The Lord loves righteousness and justice. What does God want? Righteousness and justice. And me and you when we here, that must ask ourselves the question, what we want? So we want some things, eh? We want to be in some places. Hello? We are like eat certain food. Know certain people. Here is what the Bible says, the Lord loves righteousness and justice. If we are citizens in his kingdom, to be consistent, we have to love the thing them, we him love. True? Otherwise, who you are representing? So what does it mean to be righteous? And for some people, righteousness means doing it the way I do it, liking what I like. Hello? You have some people who never wrong yet? Hello? But I'm, I'm, all right, I'm talking to myself. What, what does it mean to be righteous? Anybody? Talk to the people in on the computer, can't hear you.
First of all, you have to follow the will of the Almighty by doing his will, what he wants, not what you want. You understand? Not because you see ten dollars over there, you know, it says not yours, you want it, but you have to follow the Lord will by not taking it.
All right, do the will of God. Anybody else have another contribution? Doing what is pleasing to God. So Psalm thirty-three, verse eighteen to verse twenty-two. Let me just put this in while you find it or while you decide to read it. Righteousness is an attitude of the heart and it is an aspiration, something that we strive for, something that we yearn for, something that we aim to make a part of how we live, how we deal with people, how we respond to provocation. So a man who is right or upright, when you tell him same wrong, him not go fight you. Him go hear what you say and make sure it true, so he know how to respond. It does not mean that he is perfect. Eh? But the attitude of his heart, what occupy him mind, what him want more than anything else is to do the will of his Lord. It is what he strives for in life. Yes. Brendan, you have the microphone, you know. Come over here, sir, because I want to hear you.
I said, ref, based on what you have said, you could use David as an example, both David and Saul as an example. When name and point out David iniquity, him did not find excuse, him admit up to it that he is wrong and repent. The situation with Saul, when Samuel pointed out his iniquity is disobedient, him find excuse and try to go around it.
Yeah. So attitude and what he striving for. So Psalm thirty-three, verse eighteen to twenty-two.
Behold, the eye of the Lord is upon them that fear. Behold, the eye of the Lord is upon them that fear him, upon them that hope in his mercy, to deliver their soul from death and to keep them alive in famine. Our soul waited for the Lord; he is our help and our shield; for our hearts shall rejoice in him, because we have trusted in his holy name. Let thy mercy, O Lord, be upon us, according as we hope in thee.
So, so again, making the point that righteousness has to do with the attitude of our hearts. The psalmist says, the eye of the Lord is upon those who, what? Reverence him, who worship him with awe-inspired reverence and obedience. So, we don't come to hear the word or we hear the word and go on like, I know we, it are talk to. Paul said, that is the man who see himself in a mirror, turn away and forget what kind of man him is. Eh? The, the, the person who is striving after righteousness, upright living to please God, is going to reverence and obey. He is going to hope in God's compassion and loving kindness. So where you get your strength and your hope and your courage and your inspiration to face life from. The man who is striving after God and striving after righteousness is looking to God for his guidance, for his direction, for his way of doing things. Thirdly, it says, he is our, we wait on him, on the Lord, for he is our help and our shield. This person who is striving after righteousness is depending entirely on God for everything that he needs for life. Whether it's material or emotional or whatever, he is looking to God. And the psalmist wraps up the insight into what righteous living is all about by saying, Lord, let your steadfast love be upon us in the same way that we hope in you. That's unrisque, don't it? Because me and you sometime want God's favor, but we no want trust him. Talking to real people here. Yes, sir. But you now have the microphone.
But pastor, waiting upon the Lord, you have to be patient because sometime him bring your right to the brink, you understand? And if you're not patient and wait on him, you'll try to go overboard and get yourself in trouble. But you have to wait on him because he is faithful and just.
Yes. So, so Rudolph, hear, hear this. I like the idea of waiting on God and having, experiencing his loving kindness purely on the basis of how God, how God's loving kindness work. All when we are not faithful, him remain faithful because him can't deny himself. But, but David is trying to say, me don't want to stop trusting in you. Hmm? I want, I want you to be the center of it all. Next thing, Matthew chapter five, verse nineteen to verse twenty-one. Two things I want to say about this business of what it means to be righteous. Matthew five, nineteen to twenty-one. Somebody volunteering to read?
Lay not up for yourselves treasures upon earth, where moth and rust doth corrupt.
Five, nineteen to twenty-one.
I am sorry, I, I looked at six, I'm sorry. Alright. Whosoever therefore shall break one of these least commandments and shall teach men so, he shall be called the least in the kingdom of heaven; but whosoever shall do and teach them, the same shall be called great in the kingdom of heaven. For I say unto you, that except your righteousness shall exceed the righteousness of the scribes and Pharisees, he shall in no case enter into the kingdom of heaven.
Alright, thank you Lacy. Important lesson here, point being made by our Lord. He says, treat the commandments of God seriously. Commandments of God are not time-bound for Old Testament reading. If we all are life, eh? Because it's your heart response of obedience to God. With me, following me? Alright. If you, if, if you teach, if you break them and teach others to do the same, you are going to be called least in the kingdom of heaven. And then Jesus goes to make a very serious remark, statement. Him, him drop, him drop the hammer them say. For, I say, there's a reason, for. Attitude of heart and what me and you are try pursue and obey God's word for is this. Unless your righteousness is more than the scribes and the Pharisees, you can't go heaven. So what is the difference between what the scribes and Pharisees did and what God is asking us to do? You mustn't just know it and preach it if we practice it. You can only practice it when your heart dead it, when it is the attitude of your heart and the aspiration of your soul. You're not just going through motions and can't quote scripture. He's asking you to live it. Practice, 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 way of life. That mean perfection? No? I, I, brethren, I am, I am learning more and more, you see, that all of us come to church and name the name of Christ and somehow we there for donkey years and we still not perfect. True? We, we know, we know a bag of scripture. And all when we not think to do it, we still I make mistake and hurt people. Hello? So, so make, make we just sort out the thing now and we go to a church where everybody perfect. Hello? You, you, you get my point? So? Yeah, man? And not just, not just repent daily, but you see, when you do wrong, God have a way of helping you to see that you do wrong by bringing somebody in at the same place to show you what is right. Hello? But, but me and you no have no time for that. And everybody know we, 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 we want a, a perfect place. Well, as long as you there, it now go perfect. As long as me there, it now go perfect. Hello? Do you understand what I'm saying? Me and you need to practice the same forgiveness and mercy where we are talk about and where we want from others, we have to be prepared to show it to other people. We are talk about how the kingdom work. The kingdom work on forgiveness, it work on mercy, it work on loving kindness. So what claim do you and I have to righteousness? Where you get your righteousness from? Hello? Talk to me. Where, where you get your righteousness from? Well, Isaiah chapter sixty-four, verse six and verse seven says, but we are all like an unclean thing; and all our righteousness, our righteousnesses are like filthy rags. We all fade as a leaf. The temptation is to walk upon them and sister we have trouble. Alright, okay, I will remember. No, Rudolph, I like the part where Isaiah say, we all fade as a leaf. Cause, cause sometime me and you depona high horse, you know. Why them don't do that, why them don't do that? And little bit after that, somebody ask, then him never know that. You understand what I'm saying? We all fade as a leaf. That's why we need with one another. Mister brethren, is a wrong move that. And when people tell you say is a wrong move that, you know vex. Because you go home, go check if what them are said true. Some of us take the approach, say, then the whole are we no sinner, might go on like. I know the attitude that. Cause God love you, him show you, him send somebody to come show you. Hmm? So we are learn and I grow and we are do it in community. All our righteousness. So I ask the question again, where you get your righteousness from? Our iniquities like the wind have taken us away; and there is no one who calls on your name, who stirs himself up to take hold of you; for you have hid your face from us and have consumed us because of our iniquities. Israel found themselves in a bad place. Land was prospering and they thought, boy, we arrive. Eh? So God is telling the prophet, warn them, because the self-righteousness and these, this thing where them know the rituals and then can't do them, not speaking the whole story about where the nation is. And that's why it's not just knowing it and being able to teach it, we are required to practice it, to love it. First Corinthians chapter one, here are some other passages that I'm going to ask persons to read as you volunteer. First Corinthians one, twenty-nine to thirty-one. Second Corinthians chapter five, verse twenty-one. And Romans fourteen, verse seventeen. Remember, here we are addressing the question, where do you get your righteousness from? And we have already established that all our righteousness is like filthy rags. First Corinthians one, twenty-nine to thirty-one. And then Second Corinthians five, verse twenty-one. Romans fourteen and verse seventeen. Volunteers, go ahead, go. No, here, 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 here. End of the, end of the line. First Corinthians one, twenty-nine to thirty-one. Then Second Corinthians five, verse twenty-one. And Romans fourteen, verse seventeen.
Alright. That no flesh should glory in his presence, but of
Give us your load this.
That no flesh should glory in his presence, but of him are in Christ Jesus, who of God is made unto his wisdom and righteousness and
Sanctification?
Sanctification and redemption, that according to its written, is that gloried, let him glory in the Lord.
Alright. So Paul says, no flesh should glory in his presence. In other words, me and you no have no righteousness to show off about. Thank you. We don't have none to boast about. Anything you have, a God give, anything. Hmm? But of him is because of God's love shown to us through Jesus Christ and in his working out his plan of salvation, working out, demonstrating his love for mankind. He has made Christ the way for us to claim righteousness because we believe in Christ. We have accepted Christ as Savior. That is the only basis upon which me and you can claim any righteousness, any sanctification, any born again, any redemption. Hello? Sanctification is just to be set apart from doing the wrong to wanting to do the right. It is God who does it. It is God who gives me and you the desire. It is, eh? Microphone.
It's only through Jesus Christ you can gain righteousness because only through Jesus Christ, because he's righteous.
Yes, yes. Me and you no have no righteousness of our own to boast about. Second Corinthians five, verse twenty-one. This is how God worked it out. You hear? This is how God made it possible for us to be declared righteous.
Chapter five, verse twenty-one. For he had made him to be sin for us, who knew no sin, that we might be made the righteousness of God in him.
I just want to make the point that when Jesus died on the cross, he took everybody's sin upon himself to the point where God could not look at his son. Eh? That is why Jesus bawled, my God, my God, why have you forsaken me? Because the place dark. Physically and him feel alone spiritually because he has become the sacrifice for sin. He has become the scapegoat, the sin bearer. God made him to be sin for us, who knew no sin. Why? That me and you could come to church and take the bus and go to work in the market and be declared the righteousness of God. You are proof, you are the evidence of what God has done through Jesus Christ. So that some people who used to walk in darkness, no walk in the light and feel good about themselves and can become examples to the world as witnesses for what Jesus Christ can do. All you do, all you do is accept what he has done for you. Alright. Romans chapter fourteen, verse seventeen is a verse that we've read before. Understand this.
Seventeen two?
Romans fourteen, verse seventeen.
Okay. "For the kingdom of God is not meat and drink, but righteousness and peace and joy in the Holy Ghost."
Alright. I talked already about how we, me and you live as Christians. It is not to serve with self. Paul is into a big discussion here with the Romans about who must eat what and who must eat what. And him say, if, if, if a man eat what him feel like just because him have a freedom in him conscience to do it, he must be careful that him don't offend a weaker person. And he goes on to say, no, you can't hurt your brothers simply because him can't manage pork. And you love it. So don't make something as simple as meat and drink drive division between you and your brother. What him saying is that me and you as Christians must be careful about how we live with each other. You must be sensitive. We must be sensitive to one another. And sometimes the temptation is to say, but a long time you my Christian and I'm supposed to grow up now. You grow up? You get, you get my point? Be sensitive. Be sensitive. Because the kingdom of God is more than meat and drink. More than meat and drink. It is righteousness, doing what is right. It is about creating peace. And it's about the fellowship you have, joy, because of the Holy Spirit. Sit there, sit there.
That example is not unreasonable in some case. The truth about it, some things must be taken into context. Because remember, Paul speaks about babes in Christ and also mature believers.
Yes.
Say, if it is that the brother who we are say should have been mature, if he's expressing that he's eating meat and at that milk stage, that is understandable. Because sometimes some people really and truly take things for granted. Say, it must take into consideration the context of how the situation is dealt with.
Context here is some people want meat and some don't want no meat. Am I going to eat meat if it is going to affect your walk with God? Eh? Is it, is the principle of caring for one another? Yeah. So we looked at, we looked at what is righteousness? We look at where we get righteousness from? We look at the importance of righteousness in the kingdom. Want to share with us a little quote I read this morning about, um, Zolika Mandela. She is the granddaughter, or was, is granddaughter of Nelson Mandela. She died, she died of cancer at the age of forty-three. She say, quoting now, "What do I tell my children? How do I tell them that this time around, I may not get to live my life as a survivor?" She had had cancer before. "How do I tell them everything will be okay when it is not? I am dying. I don't want to die." So me ask, sorry, that is off of BBC this morning. So I ask myself the question, you desperate for life? Relationship with God? You desperate to be a citizen in the kingdom of heaven? How much you prepared to pay for it? How desperate are you? What will you do to maintain your right as a citizen in the kingdom of heaven? Lady says she, she, she don't want to die. Sound like plenty Christian, you know. We now go someplace, don't want to die. We don't, we don't want to die. Go back to Matthew chapter five. How prepared are we to hold on to the kingdom of heaven, regardless of what it is going to cost us? Couple of things. Jesus says. Matthew five, one, two, six and ten. He is, he is teaching, this is the, the sermon on the mount, the Beatitudes. Seeing the multitudes, he went up on a mountain. And when he was seated, his disciples came to him. Then he opened his mouth and taught them, saying, verse six, "Blessed are those who hunger and thirst for righteousness, for they shall be filled." Hear me. Your hunger and your thirst for righteousness is a response to what the Holy Spirit of God is doing in you. Eh? Because under normal circumstances, me and you blind, me just want the next plate of food or the next vehicle or the next house or the next girl or the next boy. You get my point? We are confined to think blindly. The God of this world blinds our eyes. It is God who is working in us to want and to do what is pleasing to him. Jesus says, blessed are those, meaning they are to be envied. Ah? They're in a special place, special position when you start hunger and thirst after righteousness. What that mean? Regardless of what it takes, it has to be satisfied. So you might, you might lose a limb. You might lose an eye. But you want to live righteously. You want to please God. So no guy will come get you for tell no lie. You with me? That is the price that we are being encouraged to pay so that we may maintain life, our place in the kingdom of heaven. Are we there? No. Sometimes we are and we will, but another time we fade like a leaf. Whoa. Your, your, your brother, your brother David fade like a leaf. Sometime they fade last long, you know. You, you, you lust, you lie, you kill, eh? Because him fade like a leaf. But God still love him. Next thing he says, not only do we hunger and thirst after righteousness, those are two of the most basic, um, longings me and you can have, don't it? Come on, we hunger and thirst and you all drink seawater. Eh? You eat, you eat only, oh no, I must say my name. You eat chips when you don't normally eat chips because you're raw. You get the point? Next thing he says is that blessed are those who are persecuted for righteousness sake. For theirs is the kingdom of heaven. Being a Christian, being a citizen in the kingdom of heaven, being a citizen of any kingdom does not save you from risk because you have rivals. People who don't like you or don't like the kingdom to which you belong. Reality of life. And they will set traps for you. Jesus says blessed are those who are persecuted because them want to do what is right. So there is a price to be paid. Now, Luke eighteen, verse eighteen to verse thirty. Luke chapter eighteen, verse eighteen to verse thirty. Righteousness very often, righteousness very often is going to bring you into conflict with riches, with pleasures. Hear me? Doing what is right very often is going to bring you into conflict. You have hard choices to make between doing what is right and pleasing to God or doing what is pleasing to yourself, what look good in the eyes of the world. Hmm. Alright. Luke eighteen, eighteen to thirty. Luke eighteen, verse eighteen to verse thirty. Read, read for the lady.
And a certain ruler asked him, saying, "Good master, what shall I do to inherit eternal life?" And Jesus said unto him, "Why callst thou me good? None is good save one that is God. Thou knowest the commandments, do not commit adultery, do not kill, do not steal, do not bear false witness, honor thy father and thy mother." And he said, "All these have I kept from my youth up." Now, when Jesus heard these things, he said unto him, "Yet lackest thou one thing. Sell all that thou hast and distribute unto the poor, and thou shall have treasure in heaven, and come follow me." And when he heard this, he was very sorrowful, for he was very rich. And when Jesus saw that he was very sorrowful, he said, "How hardly shall they that have riches enter into the kingdom of God? For it is easier for a camel to go through a needle's eye than for a rich man to enter into the kingdom of God." And they heard it said, "Who then can be saved?" And he said, "The things which were, which are impossible with God are pas- are impossible with men are possible with God." Then Peter said, "Lo, we have left all and followed thee." And he said unto them, "Verify I say unto you, there is no man that had left house, or parents, or brethren, or wife, or children, for the kingdom of God's sake."
Thirty?
"Who shall not receive manifold more in this present time and in the world to come, life everlasting."
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Here, 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 this is a story of, well, we call him the rich young ruler. The Bible here says a certain ruler. He wants to inherit eternal life. Remember, Miss Mandela says, "I don't want to die." Eh? This man comes to Jesus saying, "I want to inherit eternal life." All of us want the best of life, don't it? Come on. We want the best of life. So what shall I do to inherit eternal life? Here, here, how Jesus attempts to help the man grow in him commitment, in him surrender to God and to right. Him take him through what him know. Hmm? So you know the basics. But I'm asking you for a little more. He says, "You still lack one thing. You have one little bump in the road to get over." Now, now to me who don't have many possessions, is a little bump in the road. But because, I suspect because of the size of his possession, is a big deal. Eh? However, no matter how big the thing is, it can't be as valuable as life eternal. True? Jesus who come from heaven because of when he sip on earth, say, what sense it make? To gain the whole world and lose your own soul? Alright. So he brings him to the place in verse twenty-four, twenty-three and twenty-four, where he says to him, "You still lack one thing. Sell what you have, give to the poor, and you will have treasure in heaven. And come follow me." My friend said, "Me now give certain for uncertain." In a sense, that's what him saying. No? How me must give me stocks and bonds and houses and cars? He went away sorrowful, for he was not just rich, but very rich. And me and you every now and again get presented with the choice. Am I going to hold on, go for what me feel good about, what I enjoy? Or am I going to do what is right, what is pleasing to God? All of us have to make that choice. At some point in your life, you have to make a choice like that. Sometimes, sometimes, plain as straight, is a man or is a woman, is a relationship. Make we bring it down to earth. We have choices to make. Tell a man one time, said, "Boy, the work, the work nice. You know hard. You pay me better money than what me I forget, used to get." But how me I get the money? Not right. Because every month me have write upside, me appear rent. And me not pay no rent. So me don't know how you go work it out no boss. But me not happy. Can't deal with this. And push back in him chair and say, "But everybody I do it." But me can't talk to everybody. I like go in me bed and sleep good because Jesus might come at any hour, like a thief in the night. Me not like, you understand me? So we parted, him couldn't understand. Job is good to win a bet. Eh? Yeah, as long as they have the mic. Yes.
As I talk about that incident with the um with the um rental from his salary. I think management because they don't want to give you an increase, so they dip into that. And I did that, I did that for um for years. They, they, where I was working, they were doing it and a, a contact came and she said, "We are to write a letter, sign a letter and say that the house that we are living in, we don't own it and our name is not in it." That is where I, mm-mm, I said, "No, it can't go further because my name is in the house that I live in." And I being a Christian cannot do that.
Yeah.
So I said, "I must send a letter so I won't get that um benefit." So coworker said, "Miss workers, why you do that? Why, why, why don't send?" I said, "No, that should be a lie because I'm going to sign that the house, you know, don't belong to me. And pastor, it's a good thing we do it." I thought years back because the pension I'm getting, no, I would not be getting it. You understand?
Yeah.
So because I, I, they did not take out the money for the housing thing. I'll pay more NIS. And when I'm getting for NIS now, when I told someone, they say, "You getting that?" And because management um go into that money, employees don't get NIS they're supposed to get because if they show that they are working less than whatever, less NIS is going to go. So I'm just advising anyone who's in that situation, don't let them do that to you, pay your NIS.
Here, here, we, we, we going from to it, Jesus say, "If you, if you leave, if you leave house, our parents, our brothers, our wife, our children, for the sake of the Kingdom, you're going to get back many more times in this life." Lord have mercy. Because we love talk about heaven, Jesus say, "In this life, probably if you to go on other road, pinch the thing on thing, stress kill you." Anyway. It is easier for a camel to go through the eye of a needle than for a rich man to enter the Kingdom of God. Still want to be rich? Thank you, thank you, thank you. God not have no problem with riches, you hear me? Some of us don't have it because him know say if him give it, we are go forget him. Some of us don't have it because him know say if we have it, we not go manage it right. You understand? But as long as the heart wants to please God, he will give it to you. Some people get one talent, some get two, some get fives. There is a reason. Third thing that we pick up from this exchange with the rich ruler is this. We've mentioned it before, but we're going to say it again, verse twenty-eight. Stee Peter tells him, "We have left all and followed you." And Jesus' assurance is that the person who follows him in the pursuit of righteousness is not going to be any worse off for doing that. In fact, he's going to be better off. Some of us come out of situations where people wonder how you manage on the little you have, hello? Because God teach you faithfulness and wisdom in hope he spend money. Eh? Alright. Mark nine verse forty-seven. "And if your eye causes you to sin," remember we're looking at how desperate are you for life, what are you prepared to pay for it? If your eye causes you to sin, pluck it out. "It is better for you to enter the Kingdom of Heaven with one eye rather than having two eyes and be cast into hellfire." Bottom line, brothers and sisters, the Kingdom of Heaven might be costly, but it is invaluable. It is indescribable compared to what me and you are struggle over. Right, you, you would have heard me say it before, but I, 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 I'm amused at how me and you live in a two-bedroom house, but we want a three-bedroom. And then when you get the three-bedroom, we want a four-bedroom. When you get the four-bedrooms, you want a den and you want a study and you want a patio and you, yeah, and you want to go upstairs. And then you see him want turn around balls, the boy hard for clean. You, you get my point? But that is the way we are. What Jesus is encouraging us to understand, to appreciate is this. It better you go heaven with one eye, one foot and one hand, and you are saved eternally than to have all of them thing you, where you can't carry with you. Hello? Me not tell you not to have ambition? No, that's not what I'm saying. But we must strive for things at the expense of our peace with God. Sweetest thing that can't happen to me and you is to go over bed and enjoy the sleep. Alright, alright. Final thing for tonight. There are two things that we can't separate as citizens, people living, striving for the Kingdom of Heaven. Two things, them go side by side. This is Jesus still sermon on the moon, speaking to his disciples. Verse thirty-two and verse thirty-three, Matthew chapter six. He says, "Your Father know that you need food, clothing, and shelter. Don't run them down like people who don't know God. Cut throat, tell lie, scheme, scam, whatever, to get it. Your heavenly Father knows that you have need of these things, and he make you. He know what you need. Hmm? But seek first the Kingdom of God and his righteousness, and all these things shall be added unto you." When him say, "Seek first the Kingdom of God and his righteousness." It not one at the expense of the other. The two of them go together. We can't be seeking the Kingdom, but we are general. Hello? One life. If you're seeking the Kingdom, because it's a Kingdom of righteousness, remember? Hebrews one, Hebrews, Hebrews thirteen verse eight. What am I saying? Hebrews one verse eight, Psalm forty-five verse six and seven. If we are seeking the Kingdom, the Kingdom have a rule of righteousness eh? If we are following Jesus, he has given to us his righteousness. It's only because of him where we can't claim to be right, you know? Alright? Him say. You, you remember when them used to marry things? Anybody here old enough to remember when them used to marry things on market? And, and, and we, we can't get no rice because they married with cornmeal. Or anybody remember that? Yeah. Well, the righteousness go with the Kingdom of Heaven. Inseparable. And it, it is, it is easy and it is a serious mistake we make when we think that we can come to church or we can work our way into the Kingdom of Heaven. At the same time, we live anyhow anyhow. Because we have money or we talented or, or whatever it is we think our claim to fame is. God is looking for righteousness. But that you can sing and whatnot and whatever it is you think is your claim to fame, that can't get you into heaven if you not live righteously. Seek first the Kingdom of God and his righteousness. Second thing. The material is nothing. It cannot be compared with what the Kingdom of Heaven has to offer. I don't care how your bankbook looks. Don't care how nice your house is. It cannot be compared to the Kingdom of Heaven. I, I, I saw a documentary um couple evenings ago about this man who never have and hardly have two penny to rub together. But the man was a general. Highest order. Him sell shares in a company that was going to make a particular kind of vehicle. To the point where the company have eight billion US dollars worth of stocks in the market. That's the value of the thing. My friend buy the biggest, richest, most expensive house in his state. Other people money. Him go to Turks and Caicos and him buy a house down there too. And then him come out and tell people that his company can make hydrogen and them have the biggest hydrogen plant facility in the whole of the US. And some, at, at them headquarters. And somebody fly a drone over the headquarters and it's pure black and steel. No hydrogenomic. Nothing you have. Nothing you are aspiring for and nothing you're driving harder in the material that is causing you to compromise your faith can ever be worth the Kingdom of Heaven. Alright. We wrap up there for tonight. Any questions? Or comments? Anybody? Question, comment? Online? You can type it or you can voice it. Peter ask a serious question. Who then can enter into the Kingdom of Heaven? Me and you, me and you in our state think, "Boy, me glad me not have the worries of riches, you know, because it easier for me to go heaven." Hello? And, 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 and Jesus says, "No. No. With man, it might be impossible, but with God, all things are possible. All things are possible. No, no, no worry yourself. Commit your ways to the Lord. He will direct your path." Alright, since there are no questions, is, is it that I've gone on too long and you tired? You want to go home? Eh? I see, okay. Thank you, sister babe. Let's stand. We, we want to acknowledge our two visitors for, first time you coming? First time you coming? You've been to church? Okay. You've been to Bible study too? You've come to Young People's Meeting? You've come to the Young People's Meeting? No, okay. Oh, alright, welcome. And, and when, when, when the brethren come to you and ask you your name and thing, and the fasting, fasting want to see other road and recognize you. Here, both of you. Your first time too? Nice, welcome. Alright, Father, we want to thank you for your word. Thank you, Lord, for the privilege, the freedom of being able to gather like this. And we want to ask you from the, from the depths of our hearts, don't, don't make us, don't allow us by your grace. Don't allow us to just hear it and go home, but forget about it. When, when, when the trials of life come, as they will, help us to remember them and help us to remember that we have your Holy Spirit who will guide us into the truth. We have your Holy Spirit who will bring back to our memory what we have heard, what we have committed. Thank you for the offering. We asking oh Lord to bless us as we part. In Jesus' name. Take us safely home. Take us home rejoicing and thankful for your favor. Thankful for the fact that you know us and you still love us. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen. God bless you. Have a good night.